I have six o'clock. So I say we, uh, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, Roque, McKnight?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Rojas?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Kinder?
Here.
Uh, is that your allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're gonna go to, uh, public comments. Before we do, um, we got a spiffy new timer on here to keep everybody at five minutes at, uh, agenda items and three minutes at non-agenda items at the end of the meeting, just so everybody knows. Uh, Katie will have that on the desk here. Um, and first person, um, says Holland Towers, uh, Wayne? Is that Wayne?
Yes, it is Wayne, is that?
Holland Towers, yeah. Or, um, is that an agenda item, Wayne?
What?
You have, you're gonna speak, is that an agenda item? I just have to hear it. Did you?
Uh, this is same thing.
Sure.
Basically, that's all.
Okay.
They can go on and make a.
Well, Wayne, we'll give you, uh, minutes at the end of the meeting, okay? Cause I, I, we want to hear you speak too.
Okay.
Okay. Lindsay?
Hi, host. I'm Lindsay Melring. Um, I'm here just to make some comments about the, uh, rental inspection today. So, uh, it's really important to me, this rental inspection. Um, and recently, uh, something that I wanted to talk about was, um, a lot of people know that I deal, I've been dealing with code enforcement for the last year or so. So, um, our code enforcement came up around, what was supposed to come up around November and December. So we called, because we didn't get, um, any paperwork in the mail. We hadn't heard anything from the fire department, so we called up, said the fire department. We can't, we haven't heard anything back, what's happened? They said, um, that they closed the case without coming to inspect our house. And that they came out and they inspected our house with our landlord. Um, so we asked them, did you do that when we were home? And they said, um, that they came out, they repeated themselves and said they came out and inspected it. So we don't know when they came out and inspected it, or if they came out when we were home, or if they came inside. Um, cause most of the problems were inside. Uh, they were with the windows and they were with, uh, dilapidated, uh, walls and, uh, things like that. So, uh, we're really upset about it. Um, because, like, my, my son's door that leads to the outside from his room, there's, like, big gaps in it and that was part of it. And we have to, like, roll up blankets and shove them in the door, like, to shut the door to keep it shut and to keep it from blowing snow in when it's blistery, so that he can stay warm in his room. Um, that was part of the fixing that was supposed to be done within that year that Marcy Kamps told us to do when she told us to go to the code enforcement. She had suggested that. So, I mean, I, I don't know what else is, like, expected of me. I, I feel like I'm going through the motions to get this stuff done. And I'm just being trampled on. Um, cause now, I'm a couple months away from my lease, we've been fighting this, and now I feel like I'm just gonna be thrown out of my house when we've been spending all this money to get the roaches taken care of and they're gone. And we've been spending so much money to keep warm and I've just been abused and neglected and pushed around and now the fire department, I can't trust them. They, they fined me $200 for not having enough smoke detectors in my house that I was supposed to install, apparently. And I fought that, I went to the judge and he told me, yeah, it was my fault because after six months, apparently, I was supposed to know how many smoke detectors I had in my rental. But I was never taught something like that, um, because I don't own things. So, I just, I feel very, um, I feel very stuck and confused. And I would just like some direction from here because, um, uh, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm just a mom trying to get through the winter, trying to keep my kids warm and fed and safe. And I just expect the same kind of respect I'm giving back. Um, you know, I, I don't, I didn't ask him to pay for the roaches. I, I paid Ehrlich, I did that, gave that thousand dollars to get rid of those sons of bitches that I did not bring there. But I just, I just wanted a warm house.
Thank you, Lindsay. Um, Joe?
Yeah, uh, so, I guess, following what Lindsay's talking about, uh, with her issues with her rental and her landlord, I'm here to talk about the, uh, the anti-retaliation ordinance that is on the agenda as a discussion item. Uh, and I think a lot of, like, a lot of people here, I'm here to express support for that ordinance. I don't know if people can give a show of hands, how many people are here to show support for the ordinance? So, this is something that came about, um, as a result of what's happening at Connect 55, which I think you're all aware, that's the senior apartment complex that's up on Pine Street. Uh, they're owned by a company that's called Well Tower that makes over $4 billion a year. And this summer, that company decided to raise rents on the seniors who are living there. And so some of them are now having to pay an extra $300, an extra $400 a month just to stay in their home. Uh, and obviously, this is impossible for a lot of people living there, they can't afford this. They've been organizing rallies over the last couple months, they've been signing petitions, they've been speaking to the news media, and they've been showing up to speak to you here at city council. Um, but you might notice that there aren't any residents from Connect 55 who are speaking publicly here tonight. And there's a reason for that. And the reason is that, um, the company that manages Connect 55 recently sent their corporate lawyer down to the building, uh, to threaten the tenants who have been speaking out. Um, they, the lawyer basically isolated all of them and pressured them to stop doing what they're doing. And they even told two of the residents there that they are not going to renew their lease because they have problems with the apartment and because they've been speaking publicly about it. So this is retaliation, plain and simple. And the corporate landlord is basically trying to silence them. So that's why, you know, we brought you this anti-retaliation ordinance. Uh, I know that some of them have been speaking with you privately where they feel more comfortable. They've spoken to you, Jamie, in your office hours, you, Autumn, and they, and they're grateful to you, Autumn, for shepherding this ordinance to council. But the purpose of the ordinance is basically to protect all renters in the city for the kind of retaliation that's happening at Connect 55. So right now, tenants have no protection against landlord retaliation. The Pennsylvania Attorney General's Guide to Tenant Landlord Rights makes this clear. I mentioned this at the last council meeting. That document states, I'm gonna quote here, "There is no general provision in Pennsylvania law that prohibits landlords from retaliating against tenants for exercising their rights under Pennsylvania's landlord-tenant laws." But the document goes on to say that "local municipal governments," like the city of Meadville, "may enact laws to prohibit a landlord from retaliating against tenants for exercising their legal rights." And that's basically what this ordinance does. It prohibits landlords from retaliating against tenants for exercising their legal rights. It follows the same general scheme as the anti-retaliation provision that's in the rental registration ordinance that council adopted last month. That provision prohibits landlords from retaliating against tenants for reporting code violations. This new ordinance would cover a broader range of legal rights. For example, it would cover the right to organize, the right to request repairs, the right to ask a landlord to refrain from increasing rents or fees, the right to withhold rent if there are serious habitability issues that aren't getting fixed by the landlord, like Lindsay's talking about, the right to file a complaint with a public official, the right to speak to the news media or at a public meeting, like at city council. That's something that seniors, again, at Connect 55 have been doing. Now they're facing retaliation from a multi-billion dollar out-of-state corporation. So I guess I'm here to ask you if you think this is acceptable. Is this something that's acceptable to you to happen in our city? That this kind of retaliation happens? We know it happens. We know it happens all the time. We know landlords retaliate against tenants who raise a fuss, who call the fire department, who come to speak at city council. So if you think this is unacceptable, you need to pass this ordinance. And you need to do it as soon as possible because, again, if, this is happening right now. Not just at Connect 55, it's happening all around the city. A lot of renters in Meadville are afraid, just like the renters now at Connect 55 are afraid. They're afraid to come out and speak, but they shouldn't be afraid. We should not have a city where renters are afraid to exercise their legal rights. I'm gonna go 20 seconds. They should not be afraid to speak at city council or to the news media. They should not be afraid to work together to address those rented, uh, those outrageous rent increases. But they are, which is why we need this ordinance. The renters are fighting for their rights, like the seniors at Connect 55 are fighting for their rights. They've been showing courage. We need you to show courage. We need you to back them up.
Thank you, Joe. Um, I, I do have a quick question for you, Joe.
Yeah.
Um, you said Well Tower. Earlier this year, you had said another name. What was the, what are, what's the other name?
So this summer, the company called Well Tower, they bought up the building from another company called the Calamar Corporation. Calamar is still managing the building, but Well Tower owns it.
Okay, thank you. Um, Cassandra?
Hey. So, Joe said something I was gonna say. So, I just kinda wanna echo what he said and just tell you that I, myself personally, have been in relationship with a lot of renters who are facing this. This is urgent, it's happening. Um, these people need protection. You all are able to provide that protection for them. Um, and, yeah, uh, exactly what Joe said, like, is this acceptable in our city? Um, I, I'm in a, you know, very insecure housing situation myself and I would like that kind of protection, to not have a landlord be able to just evic- not evict me, but like, maybe decide they're not gonna renew my lease for, like, no good reason other than I decided to exercise my constitutionally protected rights. Um, so, that's, that's what I'm here asking you for. And, uh, Lindsay's saying that in a couple of months, um, her lease is running up. And, you know, I'm very, I'm afraid for her and I can't imagine how she's feeling. And, um, I know there are a lot of people who we're in contact with often, who we're in relationship with, who are feeling that is very real fear. Um, housing is, is so important to us and, uh, yeah, I guess that's all I got. Thanks, Joe, clearly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cassandra.
Sure.
Um, Dan?
Alright, I don't need the five minutes. Um, a few months ago, I came before council and talked about the rental inspection petition that we brought about. Uh, we had more than a thousand signatures and it could've been so many more if not for these people that were afraid of being retaliated upon. Um, they, like, one example I remember, someone came to the door, nodding and approval, like, agreeing, and then, "Give me a second." They went back and talked to their spouse, or girlfriend, boyfriend, whatever it was. They said, like, "I ju- I just, no, I can't, sorry." Like, is it what you're afraid of, like, your landlord? And like, yeah, they, they don't wanna have the landlord see their name on this list, even if they support it, because they're afraid of what might happen to them. They could end up homeless, or they're just struggling to find a place to live suddenly out of nowhere. Um, so, yeah, this is something that just has to be passed. Um, we need an anti-retaliation ordinance.
Thank you, Dan. Cena? Is that right? Okay.
Hi, my name is Cena Noebel. Um, I'm here to talk about the anti-retali- the retaliation ordinance as well. Uh, I did come back before you guys before to talk about the mold that was in my apartment. I don't know if you remember. Uh, and since then, I got a surprise housekeeping inspection five days before Christmas. And when I asked why I was being given a housekeeping inspection before major holidays, that's not standard operating procedure, this is approximately what I was told by Tommy Jo. "Well, you're the one that talked to city council, you're the one that contacted HUD, so now we have to come and do this, we have to check the mold out." But they didn't come just to look at the mold, they did a housekeeping inspection, which usually, in housing, we know when they're coming. They're done during recertification, we have plenty of time to prepare, cause the list is quite extensive. Uh, they do only have to give us 48 hours, but usually we have time, right? So, so it was out of the ordinary. Uh, I was threatened with eviction because I told Tommy Jo she had to wear a mask in my house. I was told that it was not my home, that, uh, what, when I said, you know, "You're coming into my home, you need to be wearing a mask." And she was like, "Well, this isn't your home, housing owns this, you just rent." And I'm like, "It's still my home, I've lived there for 15 years, right?" She was very hostile. Um, she tried to get the fire chief to show up at my house, like, I'm assuming, to intimidate me further because she couldn't bully me with her words. Um, the whole entire thing was unpleasant. She left, was not told whether her pastor failed, was not left with a list, which we usually are, we have to sign off on it. Uh, I contacted the director by email, I asked her for extra time, um, because I have those reasons why I, I can do that. It was a reasonable accommodation request. I got no response. Um, in between that and when the director showed up herself for the second inspection, which is also not SOP, they do not do that, uh, they sent maintenance up and they removed all of the visible signs of mold in my bathroom, okay? They just removed it, I have pictures. Um, so when she came back, I asked her, I said, "Look, I emailed you." Like, and I never got her response, "Why?" "Well, I was busy." Which legally, I don't think she can do. So I'm, I'm, I'm talking to HUD about that. Um, I can't explain to you the level of stress I experienced over the holiday because of this retaliatory measure by housing, because I'm here to speak out about the mold. This is the first year I didn't get a Christmas tree up. My kids didn't have a Christmas tree this year. Sorry. Um, and I am afraid now. I'm afraid to be here, I'm terrified. If you can't tell, I'm actually shaking. I'm actually terrified to talk to you and that's not right. I shouldn't be afraid to talk to you. Because I know now that I'm painting a target on my back just to talk to city council about this retaliation. Uh, the reason I'm here is because it's not over. Uh, Monday, I got a voicemail, I got a voicemail from Tommy Jo saying that I had to pay my fuel bill and I had 10 days to respond and then I would be facing eviction. Um, so I called, because I live in housing, our fuel is included in our rent, right? And she, all she said was, "Oh, it's been cleared up." Click. So this woman is actively, I feel, after me. She's trying to find reasons to, to evict me. And part of the problem is, if I had a problem with my project manager in the past, I would've gone to the director. The director is her aunt, so I don't feel comfortable doing that. Um, I don't know how that happened, but I don't really feel like there's an appropriate chain of command now that I can trust in to address these issues. So I'm gonna be going to the board and talking to them as well. But, like, I'm not the only one. There are people in housing right now who would be here, except they didn't even wanna come and sit here. They're so afraid to be seen here because of what happened to me and what's happening to other people. They won't even come and sit in this room. Okay? We should not be that afraid. I should not be afraid to speak up about something that's going on. So, I, I would urge you to pass this and please do it soon, um, cause I have kids and they deserve that place to live. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cena. Lee?
Hello. Uh, I'm Lee Scannanaro at 230 Mount Hope Street. Uh, wanted to address two agenda items. The anti-retaliation measure, main one, is I just wanted to say how important it is, just highlighting what other groups have said and stories you've heard in the past. Of course, I've had a neighbor who's been retaliated against for, uh, calling the fire department, asking for inspections and a place that she lived for 20 years got kicked out of because it wasn't her home, it was, uh, someone else's. Um, and I also wanted to speak in, in favor of, um, our great city taking back on, uh, an ambulance service uh, by, uh, our fire department. Uh, got to listen to the town hall, which I was very, uh, happy that that happened. And, uh, our wonderful union representative, Mr. Kardashian, who spoke in favor of that work. And, uh, that's very important to me as a fellow union person and someone who thinks that, uh, governments can't, uh, create businesses, but they can support well-paying public jobs uh, with good benefits and salaries that are right here in our city doing really good, uh, work to take care of our community. So I would really be in favor of us, uh, taking that on as a city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee. Amelia?
Hi. Um, sorry, I didn't see where people were standing.
They were right there, you can stand there if you want.
Hi. So, um, I guess I just wanted to bring up a point about, kind of, that this question of the anti-retaliation ordinance is really about two issues, right? Or it's about many issues, but I, I see two main ones. The first one is the economic system that has led to this situation of insecure housing in Meadville, which is a disaster, right? That's been clear from many months of these meetings and many years of, of this happening. And, and that's, that's one issue that has now led to this possibility for landlords and this, you know, giant corporation raising rents, um, in this way. Uh, and, and, and that's a problem, right? That is a problem by itself. Um, there's a separate problem, though, when people who are trying to live their lives safely um, try to do that and they get retaliated against. So that is a whole other problem. And of course, it's connected to the first problem because they really don't have much power in dealing with this big corporation that isn't even based in Meadville. Um, so what I would encourage everyone to think about is even if you have in your head, like, "Oh, yeah, well, this economic system is fine, you know, the market says that prices for housing are X, Y, and Z, and that's supply and demand, whatever," fine. But you can't think that retaliating against people who are trying to argue for their standard of living uh, is okay. That's a whole other thing. So, so that's what I wanted to, kind of, bring out, that it's the retaliation is what this is about. The economic system, I, I think, is a problem too, but that would be another question. So, just wanted to keep it clear, um, that, that there's no possible way that retaliation is acceptable. So this really has to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that was the, the last person we had, um, uh, for agenda items. Um, so we'll move on to, um, notice of executive session meetings. Then we'll, uh, approve of minutes.
Motion.
Oh, we didn't, we didn't have, we didn't get minutes, right? Okay, sorry. I'm just, I'm going, I'm going down my list. Um, communications? Managers report?
Um, I think Gary Johnson, is Gary out there?
I am.
Gary Johnson has, uh, another zoning, uh- to discuss with council as we did last week concerning the bed breakfast.
Sure.
Good evening, council. Uh, as a standard practice, anytime there's an application that goes to the zoning hearing board, we always present to council, uh, to see if council wants to take a position one way or the other on the application. In this case, it's a, it's a, it's a request for approval to build a trail over off of Bessemer Street. Um, you know, you're aware of the Bessemer Building, the old railroad station, brick building on, on the west side of Bessemer Street. Uh, the Economic Progress Alliance of Prepper County wants to build a trail, a walking trail there. It would encircle the northern parking lot area and it would come down along French Creek, behind the Bessemer Building, behind the Voodoo Brewery, be, behind the former Meadville Moving and Storage, which is now Lincoln Recycling, and then would come back out onto Bessemer Street, uh, roughly across from Nick Allen's auto. So it's basically, it's a, it's a trail and it needs to go to zoning hearing board for approval in that area. They're also seeking, in addition to that, they're seeking two variances from the requirements in the ordinance. One of the requirements is that you can build a fence no more than four feet tall. They're proposing two eight-foot fences to screen some of the Lincoln Recycling operations, um, from the trail and also a little bit from Bessemer Street. Um, that's the one, uh, variance. The other one is, I'm blanking on it right now, is to, alright. As they're building the trail, they, they would actually eliminate some of the required planting strips that have to go between parking lots and property lines. So they would essentially put the trail right through that, that vegetation area, the five-foot planting strip there, um, that was built years ago as part of the redevelopment over there. So it would actually eliminate some of those planting strips as part of this as well. Um, so those are the two variances, the fence and the planting strip. And then the general approval, they would meet all of the other standards. I think there's 10 or 11 standards that they need to meet. They would be, each of the other standards appear to meet them. Um, so, that's where we are with that application. If council, the council, I believe, received the application and the materials for that. If there's any questions, concerns, thoughts, if they wanted to take a position.
Is there any reason you suspect that the aesthetics would be harmed if you went through the planning, the plot planning strip?
Um, not, not necessarily. I mean, they're, they're just, they're about five feet wide. It's not a huge imposition, I think, as far as, it's a huge change in what they're looking to do necessarily, uh, from my personal standpoint.
I don't think we did get the application.
I, I don't think I could have gotten it.
So if we could get them, you know, that would be helpful. I imagine it includes, like, the plan, the, the- I'm trying to picture an eight-foot fence. Um, I think the only issue I would have, like, is there proposed, like, lighting? I, I guess I imagine, like, safety concerns in terms of, like, not being able to be visible? I don't know, I, I just would imagine.
You, conceivably, it wouldn't be used for during the night or during dark times. If there's no lighting, there's no signage, uh, it's, and it's not along the street, it is along the creek mainly. Yeah, I don't know that it would be used during, during the night. The area around the parking lot would be, that trail part would be eliminated by the regular parking lot lighting that they have, but other lighting would not be.
Um, with, with them making this, this trail by the, the creek, right? Um, is it going to increase people going down in those areas? Cause I, sometimes I see people, you know what I mean, like, in, in back of my mind, you know, when you go over Spur Street. Looks fine, looks great. Uh, but I, like, is it, is it gonna make for people to, to go down in, along that way, right? Like, and, and are there, is there any, like, vegetation that we're trying to, to not let people? You know what I mean, like, to, to keep there, to protect, to, you know what I mean? It's not gonna hurt any of that, right?
No, under, under the stormwater management, management ordinance and the floodplain management ordinance, they are required to make sure that the, the grade is stable, that, or is stable or not gonna have erosion or undue damage. So there's, there's very heavily restricted there anyway. Um, so from other regulations, we'll make sure that there's not really an environmental impact. There are also, the design of these, of the walkway is actually going to be that it's curvaceous and rainwater would actually go through that, so it wouldn't be like a normal concrete or asphalt surface that would have additional runoff. That's also part of the, part of the plan. So conceivably, it's hopefully to get more people down there to, to enjoy the creek.
Would the screening, um, encourage any, uh, violent crimes or attacks? Because you wouldn't, uh, be able to see people in trouble from the roadway or anywhere else? Are we creating a problem?
If someone's down, if someone's down there, maybe at night or something, I mean, anything can happen. I don't know that the fence would be, I, I guess I can't answer that. If someone's down there at night and someone wants to do something, I suppose something would happen. But I don't know that it necessarily encourages that kind of activity.
So is it part of, like, the bigger project, this trail that was originally exposed, or is that what it is?
Yes.
And do you know what the walls, the fences are gonna be? Was that in there with the covering to Lincoln Recycling? Was it, like, a, what the wall was gonna be made on?
It'd be wood, wood privacy fence.
Okay.
And that's just for view, right? Like, just, just-
Dysthetics.
Yeah.
Um, I, I feel like I don't have objections, but I haven't seen the, I haven't seen the application, so I don't feel like I can necessarily, like, send an approval. I, I wouldn't send an objection either, which I know they don't need anything from us.
And council doesn't have to take a position either, it's just a practice of, to make sure council's aware of what's going on.
Well, if we receive the, can we just do that via email? As individuals, but I don't have it.
You could probably, and I'm not a lawyer, but you could probably do consensus of council somehow if there's no objections, I don't know that you'd take a position either way.
Doesn't bind you anywhere, you think, and, and, it's just a-
This is information, right? And then we can say, yeah, of course, everybody wants a trail down there, everybody wants, you know, and if the businesses feel like that's a good idea, right? Which I'm sure they have to give up a little bit of their land, uh, to, to make it happen and, um, and eventually it'll be connected to some other things, right? Or at least get some more people over in that area, you know?
That's the plan, yeah.
Right. So, um, I'm sure everybody at council's for that, right? Like, we just haven't seen the, the, um-
Subject to review.
Yeah.
I would be supportive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that an official stance of council, or just?
Subject to-
Support, subject to review.
Yeah, sure.
Is that a motion?
Uh, I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'm gonna toss it in up there. I'm tossing it up there.
Do you second?
I did second, yeah. Go to roll call on that. McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roma?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Is that all? Counsel's subcommittee report? I think that, does anybody have anything on their subcommittees? Because we're still doing priorities, so I don't think we have much in that area. Old business discussion finalizing 2023 priorities.
So if you recall, the study session, council had narrowed everything down to really five buckets: city services, infrastructure, fiscal planning, community engagement, participation, and a housing plan. A survey was sent out in each of those categories for council to select what those priorities would be. Staff would come back to council with the top two or three out of each of those. So under city services, establishing a dependable BLS, ALS service for the city, enacting a zoning ordinance, which promotes economic growth and development, were the top two under that category. Infrastructure, Market Street parking garage, bridge repairs to the city, public works garage are the top three there. Fiscal plan, comprehensive plan for 2024 budget with five to 10-year projections, changes to Act 511. And there, community engagement, participation, increased community engagement with town halls, and an earlier, more inclusive budgeting process. And then lastly, under housing plan, create a redevelopment plan and housing plan and the housing rehab and weatherization program. In your packet, there's a memo from me with the status of kind of each of those topics that were noted to be priorities. There are 11. At this point, what staff is looking for, and as it says in your memo, that we, as staff, would like council to bless these priorities that are included in your memo, so staff may continue to move forward with those.
I like that, bless, who can bless these?
Yep.
People blessing, you know?
Right, right. Perfect. I think they, they look good. I, you know, how does everybody feel? Jim?
Well, this represents all this evaluating from, what, 20 to 30 different priorities, and we can still look down. So I think I'd be supportive of that.
Mary?
Gotcha.
You have my blessing.
Yeah, yeah, I certainly think that these feel both ambitious and achievable. We're focused on them, maybe. And I think then that the next steps, recognizing like some of this is what staff will take the lead on, but some of this maybe falls under the, those buckets that we talked about, and establishing our committees accordingly to see some of this work out. Is that the thing we do tonight? That's the next step? We can just bless this for staff to take and then?
We can have a study session if council so chooses to kind of flush out then where each of those priorities are housed as far as subcommittees are concerned.
Sure. That sounds good. Mary, is that all you needed from us? Just, okay. And can I, I'm sorry, the redevelopment plan, that is, that's around housing largely.
Correct.
And with affordable housing as a big piece of that. So that is, tonight, we're going to discuss which way we are feeling we're going to go, right? So we can set the ball moving. All right, so do we just want to start discussion first, or? Does anybody have any questions first about what, you know, these two options that we're talking about, leaving EMS the way it is, correct? Or moving forward with a city-owned EMS, our fire department being in charge of emergency services in our city?
I do have a couple of questions. One of them, a couple of weeks ago, our last meeting, I believe, when we talked about increasing fees for false alarms, the statement was made that fees had to be revenue neutral. So the question is, if we have a city-owned EMS service, and let's just say for the sake of argument, we get 300 from Medicaid, 400 from Medicare, 800 from private insurance, and the real cost is 600, do we have to be revenue neutral? Do we have to accept the 600 as opposed to the 800? I don't know with that question, then.
My understanding is that all the costs associated with the program could be, you can offset the fees brought in by those costs. So you just have to kind of, and sometimes the costs are not as obvious, sometimes there are kind of indirect costs, but you can use all the costs associated with the program to offset any fees you collect.
Okay.
That answers your question.
And I mean, is it even considered a fee, right? Because it's, right, this, we would be, you know, seeking reimbursement from insurance providers in the same way that, you know, ambulance services is now, and that's not considered.
We're charging a fee for the service. Fees can't be profit, so they have to be offset by some kind of cost.
Is that, is that what you were asking? That it, what I, what I gathered from the question, I don't know if I'm, is, is the fee, when it is something that, you know what I mean, basically the definition of the fee?
Like, is it, it's a fee schedule that we had done? Like, is it adopted in our fee schedule? Which is how we would, like?
Right, could, I mean, if, if our costs are, let's say?
The same as other fees that were?
So it's similar, like, when you're dealing with summary offenses in the police department. We don't actually set those fees, that's set by the judge, but we can't get to a point where we're recouping a profit off of those summary effects.
I'll answer your question, yes. I was going to say, so is the?
It's not a city-set fee, but it is a fee.
Well, and if, if Medicare and Medicaid is determining the fees, then, you know what I mean?
It's not in our control.
Right, that is set by local ordinance. So if the private insurance company sets that at $800, that's, that's what it is, right?
And we can't alter that.
Right, so, okay.
But we can charge the amount. It's like, in other words, if the average cost is 500 per call, and we charge 1,100, we take 300 from these people, 400 from this person, this one offers 800, my question still is, do we get the 800 out of the 1,100, or do we get the 600 that it really costs us from the high-paying?
I'm going to keep the question. Explain to me again.
Okay. If we have to be revenue neutral?
Right.
If each call costs us $600?
Right.
Okay. I have, for simplicity, I have three ways of paying for it. Medical assistance, which pays 300, which is less than our cost. Medicare, which pays 400, which is less than our cost. And private insurance, which pays 800, which is more than our cost.
It's aggregate. It's not one call for one service.
You're not doing case by cases, the aggregate overall, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions? Jim, you said you had a couple. Was that?
While you guys were talking, I have a few.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I just had a question about when you said that the can't offset a product, but it can offset a service. That, that product service thing just got in my head as a worm.
You can't, you can't profit from fees at any point.
Okay, right. When you just said product, it kind of threw you over.
I got profit, I meant.
Profit.
I don't have any more questions about EMS because we've been, you know, really deep diving into, into this. I just want to make sure everybody's questions are answered before I call for a vote here or ask for a motion.
Yeah, we've had so many different projections. And my only problem with projections is that 50 years ago, the experts told us that the red complex was going to make money. And not long after that, or just a few, just a few years ago, we had another interview. Let's see what it was. Oh, yeah, the third-party builders told us we were going to get 20 grand a year, and we haven't gotten it. So when I look at the various figures, and we've had six or eight different sets of figures, I'm wondering, where do we really stand? Where do we really know what the patient mix is going to be? And what the payment mix is going to be? And what our nonpayer percentage is going to be? We have had, we've been offered, as I understand it, by the owner of the ambulance service, the opportunity to keep a unit in the fire station, run it when they're out of service for, I think, a year and maybe longer. And we would get the fees, so we would actually know what the, we'd be able to compile our own ideas of how much it's going to cost us and what the fees are going to be, as opposed to whether we're going to actually make money, break even, or have yet another deficit to worry about next November. So I would be more supportive of having a trial run where we don't expend capital and we don't have any costs other than servicing, and we actually learn what kind of fee structure and what kind of revenues we can expect to have. Then we can make a much better decision a year or two down the road, and it's even possible at that time that the county is going to have a countywide system. They've talked about instituting that. It would be a shame to institute our own system, only to find out that the county is going to have, at least center, the center of the county is going to have a different system, and then try to reconcile the two of them together, which could be a real problem.
So I think your point is well taken, Jim, and I, too, recognize that, like, a regionalized, something like countywide would be the ultimate, like, that would make a lot of sense, spread across the county. Unfortunately, while we've seen a lot of different numbers from our staff, we haven't seen much of anything in writing that we've requested from Meville Ambulance Service or from the county EMS service to be able to make the decisions. We asked for the plan for that county EMS. We haven't gotten that. We've asked for, we've asked for, for, for numbers and reports from Meville Area Ambulance Service, and we haven't received that. I trust the numbers that we've gotten from our staff, that they've put together, that you have helped craft as well, Jim, is my understanding.
I helped some of it, yeah.
And so I, you know, I think you're right. We won't know until we're in it, right? That is the nature of projections, that they are just that. But I think that given, given what we have actually received in order to deliberate this really important thing, I'd be in favor of going with our internal city-operated ambulance service out of the fire department.
I believe we got a letter very late this afternoon.
We got an email late this afternoon that had some information in the body of it that I, you know, I talked about with Evan a little bit before. Again, not, like, not helpful, like, in deliberating, right? We got to get an email with a few numbers that are questionable the afternoon of. So again, I stand firm, I'm supportive of city-operated EMS.
Tim, what is, you know, if we move forward with the Meville Ambulance Service, what is, what are your thoughts?
Well, let me give you a little background.
Sure.
So I've been on either side of the fire department. Obviously, the finest director in the fire department didn't see eye to eye a lot. Go back 10 years, because I knew we were at the old city hall, we had the same discussion. And at that time, I was against it. I didn't think we had the ability to do it at that time. After talking with Mary Ann, who did most of the heavy lifting and all these numbers, and of course Evan, talked to him extensively this afternoon, I feel a lot better about the, the ability of our fire department to come up and do this. We have a lot more training, and other people are going to be trained. Looking at these numbers, you're right, it's an estimate, it's the best we can do with the revenues. The expenditures, I think we've done very well at. There's probably more expenditures of cost avoidance, I think, was brought up before. We didn't even include them. There could be savings that, we're not going to include them because we're not quite sure what those savings might be. The other thing I brought up was that I believe the ambulance service was asking each municipality to put in a half a mil. That's 75,000 for us. So automatically, if these numbers are off by 75,000, we're still going to break even. Come 2024, there was an, something said that it might go up to a mil or mil and a half. So now you're talking an additional 75,000 to 125,000. So that's when, at that time, and I've talked with Jim, we've been opposed on this, that I said I probably am in favor that we control our own destiny. Based on the figures that we have, there's no assurances, but I feel very comfortable where we're headed.
Thank you, Tim. I also want to just say, yes, I remember the mark, right? And yes, right, like, I know the third party. But, you know, things on paper, right? They always look great, right? And then in application, it's difficult. We're all human. We do have a decision to make, and it's about safety, and it's about safety of the people who live here in town, right? We unfortunately are responsible for that, and we have to move forward in a way that makes us very confident in the decision that we're making, and we need to put people first, right? And so while, while we call for this motion, I want, I want everybody to really think about that. We have over 13,000 people that we are responsible in making a decision for, right? The health and wellbeing of 13,000 people. And I, you know, I just want to make sure that that's what's in the forefront, that that is who we're talking about. Do you know what I mean? We have, we have people that we love in this town and care about, and we want to make sure that our decision is rooted in those people and their, their wellbeing. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to, I'm going to make a motion.
I'll just clarify, so, my understanding, what you want to do is basically, motion to establish council's intent to implement its own ambulance service, to direct the city administration, fire department, the necessary steps to implement that in the city.
Right. So we're, we are naming our intent as a council to move in that direction.
You're directing administration, fire department to take the next steps.
Sure. So what I'm going to call for is a motion for intent, in which, which way we'd like to do it.
So moved.
And so now we each state what, what intent we want, right? I say what?
Basically, that, that's the motion. You're basically, you're basically establishing your intent, you're directing city administration, fire department to take those next steps. And if along the way, additional approval is needed for specific projects, then they will come back to you. This is just for them to kind of take those first steps, just start the process.
Does a roll call though? This is just a?
Yep. We've got a first, we've got a second. We've, we've had a discussion, right? So roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roma?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
All right. Discussion, return zoning ordinance with updated planning and zoning commission recommendations. Peter?
All right. All right, we will have received your packet, I believe, a memo from me that summarizes the progress of provisions to the zoning ordinance the last time it was brought up before council, and return to the planning commission for their opinions. I believe that the memo accurately and completely summarizes the progress since then. If you have, sorry? If you have any questions about anything within that memo, please feel welcome to ask now. Basically, the planning commission, once the ordinance was returned, reaffirmed the values of retaining form-based provisions, traditional neighborhood development provisions, and the diagrammatic material within the zoning ordinance.
Peter, it seems like maybe one of the big changes that is relevant to conversations that have happened at council were some of the facade cladding requirements, like, that was a thing that I heard a lot, was like?
Yes.
What our buildings looked like being stipulated, and that has been struck, right?
Yes. Within each of the Within each of the earlier, uh, blocks of design guidelines, one of the bullet points of each for the building typologies, uh, dealt with the cladding of buildings. Uh, I had presented the option to remove that as a compromise while retaining the remainder of the form-based provisions. Uh, the ordinance before you now, that was approved by the planning commission, has removed that one bullet point, uh, specific to cladding.
So that was things like siding that is vertical was going to be not allowed in certain districts, but now that is not.
Right. The remainder of the, uh, bulk provisions, the placement of buildings on the lots, the building typologies, those are all retained in the draft report.
Um, I appreciate the planning zoning commission's catch, or maybe your catch, of, uh, that residents and stakeholders can propose amendments for free.
Yes.
That's a good catch. I don't, I, it, for some reason, it didn't, um, strike me in the initial zoning ordinance that folks had to.
It's actually quite common, a lot of zoning ordinances that I've seen within the county, where there is a provision that, uh, you can petition through a form and application for the planning commission or council to, uh, consider an amendment to the ordinance proposed by any, uh, by a person. However, anybody here can also petition for an amendment through public comment, uh, and through public communication to council, through public argument, without having to file a application, and to have to pay a filing fee for that application.
Um, what I was going to say is, so we have, what is the updated draft?
Yes.
And we will have some time to, to kind of go over that and make any suggestions or, or anything that we like to, to, uh, staff?
Yes.
Is that what we're, okay. Um, and then, um, we'll come back together with those suggestions, right? With our, and then go from there before we pass.
Yes.
Is that, is that good for everyone here?
So, so are you saying it would be, it would show up on another agenda for discussion?
Yeah.
And then?
Correct, yeah.
First and second, third and final one, it's ready?
It's a little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
But whatever, then the official part happens.
Yeah. To be fair, also, if you have any questions to direct to the planning commission, the vice chair of the planning commission is here, Jimmy Alley, um, to answer from this perspective. Otherwise, the process here is, uh, we're not done yet.
Yeah.
There was a public hearing, there was review by neighboring municipalities, there was a review by, review by the county at least 45 days before adoption. Then there's the public hearing that we have to have, and then the readings. So there's still several months, and then I assume this solicitor review as well. So there's still several months between adoption in order to fine-tune details, proofread, and make sure everything's shored up prior to.
So what, what is, so our staff calls where, right? Like, we, we get our suggestions in sooner than later, right?
Yep. So at this point, um, it's, it's completely in council's hands to review the document, and if there are any changes that want to be made, um, and then it would be up to you to, to basically say, you know, we're finalizing this and ready to move forward with the adoption process.
Okay. Can, can we set a date for that? Like, the first meeting of March? Is that too soon? That gives us a month to review it, but like, also not to keep putting out the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've been reading it, and I, I still have some concerns.
Sure.
Especially the institutional zoning, that we're trying to take three vastly different kinds of institutions and put them in common zoning, with some results that I think are maybe questionable. For example, it's easier to put a drugstore right across the driveway from Bentley Hall than it is to put a drugstore in downtown Meadville.
Yeah.
That shouldn't be.
Okay, so you'll, so things like this is what we, we give to you guys, and then we'll discuss, and then, okay.
Jim, were some of those, though, like, because those are consistent with the first version that we saw? Have you already?
They're in the.
I've already gone through, yeah.
Yeah, so you've already gone through, um, and that's already been provided to staff and planning commission for, for review and.
I just got, we just got it, so I haven't.
Well, right, but like, the institutional zone hasn't changed since the first.
Right.
So just, start, just to be clear, that this is like a new round of, of suggestions that you will need to.
Yeah, some of them were repetitious from, from the last round, but I still have a concern.
Sure. Okay, so which you said, one month?
Yep, first meeting in March.
While we have them here, um, Jim and Courtney, I don't know if there's changes you want to highlight or things about the process, is that okay? I mean, I'm glad that you're here. Is there anything you want to say about this new version?
Uh, I would say nothing specific. Um, you know, as we went through, and guys also here as well.
I, I, sorry. I was here too.
But, you know, we wanted to do something that, uh, you know, made sense, tried to provide as much consistency as possible, um, and also, uh, in the back of our minds, making sure that it was something that wasn't going to be a burden for enforcement. God forbid Gary would end up bald like me. That was, you know, kind of our approach. Courtney, you got, want to add anything to that?
I think, I think we've done all we can do with this. And to present a reasonable, form-based zoning program, I think you have to either decide to go with that or, or, or stay with what we have. I mean, it's, it's a change. I think it's an update. I think it moves us forward, I think it's progressive, but I don't think that, I mean, we've been over it and over it, and I don't think there's anything more the planning commission could do unless you give us direction to do something different from what has been done.
Might just make a couple of comments. You know, the, uh, the comments that, that I saw were really to reject a lot of the form-based requirements, and that's what the, the essence of the, the document is. And it's really to control the type of development in the city, and I think it's a very progressive step, because, you know, the, the form-based codes have been developed in communities that have been overrun by development and have lost their integrity. This is a way, I mean, I think it's, it's proactive on the city's part to develop this ordinance, because if we were to go through rampant development, we wouldn't have anything to control those kinds of things. But if we have this ordinance, we do. So I think that's very important. The other points I wanted to make was that, uh, I went back and I checked with the consultant to develop this, and they stand behind the document. There were some, um, legal challenges that were made in the comments. They said that, that there were, uh, concerns, and the attorney can look at that, but they stand behind the document. They, they've been involved in other communities that have developed this type of ordinance, and, uh, they think it's valid. And I checked, and there's other communities in Pennsylvania that have implemented this too. Another thing I would say is that I've seen communities that have actually implemented form-based codes, and I think it's, it's something good to see if you haven't seen it already, where you can see where they've really worked to try and integrate this into the community. One of the things about this document is that it does not put any real controls on the commercial sector. You go to some communities, and they really have even gone to the part point of like, converting the McDonald's into, uh, uh, yeah, into a local aesthetic and stuff like that. And they haven't done, we haven't done that with this document, so I think it's, it's very progressive, but I don't think it's overly progressive. And, uh, and instead, I should also mention, this was a recommendation of the mine Meadville group, that we have, uh, uh, look at a form-based, uh, implementation, and we've done that, and I think it's a, a way of really addressing future development in the city. So I thank you for letting me speak.
Appreciate the planning commission.
Yeah, thank you for all the hours you guys put in and the time that you guys put into it, you know? And, uh, I think, I think that's it, right? Well, we'll get our.
Yeah.
Thank you, Peter. So, um, sorry, just, so, so in a month, this will be on our agenda again, but to have an effective process and conversation, we should probably get comments to each other and for to, I guess, to staff.
Correct.
Sooner than.
Yeah, Monday of February would be, would be great.
Right, right, but we, yeah. Like, sorry, if we got comments to you in enough time for us to get them in a memo or something and deal with them. All right, great. She should front load the work this morning.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to, uh, yeah, thank you again, Peter. New business, uh, discussion, draft, anti-retaliation ordinance. I think we've heard.
So, um, in your packet, there is an anti-retaliation ordinance, uh, draft ordinance. It has been reviewed by legal counsel. Um, counsel has received a confidential legal memo from legal counsel in regards to, uh, the ordinance proposed in front of you. Bob has, can I ask any questions that you may have about it?
As far as, yeah, as far as legal opinion, I would say, from more, more depth than what was in the communications from attorney Walker, I would want to go to executive session to, to discuss it, but, um, you all received that memo, so if you did have questions, we could go to the next session to discuss it.
Does anybody have any comments or questions?
To be clear, our solicitor, your firm did not draft this, it was done by an outside attorney.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, so this was done by an attorney, um, with Regional Housing Legal Services, a house, a professional housing, uh, firm of attorneys that serves Pennsylvania, um, who does give reason, right, why this is, uh, how this kind of falls within the power of, of a third-class city, um, under the optional charter. And I think, you know, uh, per what we got from Tim, uh, who did indicate that the legal liability here is low, um, but I think as we've heard tonight, uh, the reward can be high, right? If we're giving something to tenants that's evening the playing field, as this is intended to do, um, and if the risk is low and the potential impact is high, I, I, I think it's, I think it's worth pursuing and adopting, um, for, for all the reasons we heard here.
I think we're going to get sued.
Luckily, the enforcement of this, I think the piece around the liability enforcement happens in, uh, the local courts, which is part of why, um, we are not enforcing, we would not be enforcing that.
But when we drawn into it ultimately, and our legal counsel may well be drawn into it to defend this, so we're going to be spending money we didn't have on a problem that is, did not exist. Are there people who can retaliate? Yes, but there is existing law to handle that retaliation. It's a question of educating people so that they know they have their rights, not in passing an ordinance that we can't enforce and it's going to cost us money that we don't have.
So, uh, I think it's absolutely our, our responsibility to put things in place that protect the people that live in town, but, um, when you say we, you think we're going to get sued, and then you say that it'll cost us money, you mean could, possibly? And in, in, in a possible instance, right? Like, it's a possibility, but, but as, as, I think we've been told multiple times that it's a possibility with just about anything, um, that we could be sued about anything, and since we're not, uh, the ones that are, are, you know, they're not coming to us, and we're not saying, hey, you know, you've got to do this, that, or that, whatever, it, it is just putting the burden on the landlord to, to prove that they are retaliating, right?
And after this, our whole system.
Sure.
We have a system of innocent to have proven guilty, not the other way around, and this ordinance tries to put the affirmative burden on the landlord. So if the landlord evicts someone, and somebody says, we retaliated, now the landlord has to prove, well, no, it was because they didn't pay their rent, they, uh, had trash all over the grass that was supposed to move, was three feet high, but you've placed that burden on the landlord. Ultimately, the landlord's costs are going to be passed on to other tenants, and rents will increase. Who have we helped?
Well, in, in an eviction, um, if, if, if you're clear as to why you're evicting somebody, if it is not because, if it's because of rent, that is because of rent, and that's very easily proved. If it's because of high, uh, your lawn being high, then, then you come to the city and get all the times that Gary has been out there. Um, that, that's easily proved, right? If, if, if it is a just cause, if there is a reason to be evicted, then there is a reason to be evicted, and, and, and that is what it is. If there wasn't a reason, then, then there needs to be clear proof of that, right? Nobody deserves to be evicted because, you know, they aren't organizing, or they are, or, or, right, like, like, your rights are your lives.
You're putting the burden not on the person who makes the accusation, but on the person who is the defendant. You're putting the burden of proof on the defendant as opposed to, but, actually, I guess we'd be spying it, not defending it.
Well, if, if the person, uh, is evicting someone or has a problem, aren't they going to have records because they know that they're going to have to prove this? So that's their responsibility to show that they're evicting them legally. It, it, it doesn't make sense to say that, uh, if, if they're going to sue us, it has to be for something that is sued. Asking them to keep records, which they should, I didn't think you'd do as a business owner. Why would someone get upset about?
It's not out of them keeping records, it's out of them having to prove that they are not guilty.
The records will prove it if, 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 month of March, if I didn't pay, or if I broke a window or damaged an apartment, and you have inspections in the month of May, and then you come back and see I've done more damage, you're writing that down, or how are you going to charge me for it? How are you going to recoup your loss? Because you're going to have to buy materials, you have all those, all those receipts or records. That's up to the landlord, I'm sorry. I feel that if he's evicted somebody, he has to, he has to show why.
Sure, but we just, we just heard it this evening. People say, well, you subjected me to an inspection. Well, you asked for an inspection, you got an inspection.
But, you know.
And that's being.
I'm going to be, I, I, I think we need, we really need to be realistic and, and be honest. We know that there's landlords that have done things and are doing things, okay? I feel like we're, we're trying to make the tenant prove when you can see, but, you know, they've been there all this time, and then all of a sudden they call or get someone else involved, they've been there two, three years, and then they do that, and they get a eviction, or they don't get their lease renewed. You don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure out what's going on. And, you know, they need to be called on the card, that's all there is to it. You know, tenants should not have to live in fear and, and, and houses that are not standard. And, and if we allow the landlords to continue to do that, that's what's going to happen, because they have no other recourse. We have to give them some support. We have to pass this, this ordinance, you know?
Well, when we get sued, just remember that, when we start paying fees out.
You could say I told you so, Jim.
I will definitely do that.
Bob, can I ask a question quickly? What, if we, we wouldn't really necessarily be sued though, right? Because we're not really liable, or could you explain like?
I would, I would just, yeah, I don't want to get too much into the analysis there. If you refer to the email that attorney Walker sent, that kind of outlines it, um, I'm not going to say that there's no potential chance for liability, uh, I think the assumption was the risk of liability was low. And so as a result of it, um, I was, you know, supported. So I don't want to say there's no chance of liability, but, um, I think anyways, it was a low risk liability.
Thank you. Um, if we, if we want to move forward with this, what does that process, what is that looking?
Well, the ordinance is, is, is here, I believe, if you wanted to move forward, you just do a vote on it.
You would have to amend the agenda to do first and second.
Are you planning to do that tonight?
I didn't know that was an option. Is that an option?
It is.
We can amend the agenda, first, first and second reading?
As long as the majority of council votes to do so.
And you have to state the reason why you're amending, what you're amending, the reason why you're amending it, and then, uh, votes on all those, and then perhaps a vote on the new agenda.
Have members of the public been given a copy of this ordinance so they have adequate time to express their concerns?
Because there are three readings, it gets advertised before the third reading, and that is when it is, uh, made widely available to the public.
So we could pass a first and second reading tonight, amend the agenda, pass a first and second reading tonight, pass a third and final with the.
I would move to amend the agenda to add a first and second reading of an anti-discrimination, of the anti-discrimination ordinance.
Second, anti-retaliation ordinance.
Anti-retaliation. Thanks, are you making the motion?
No.
No.
All right, I'll, I'll give you a chance, if you want. All right, so then we'll, we'll call on that.
Correct.
On amending the agenda.
On, on amending the agenda.
Uh, McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
How you doing?
Now we make a motion, or to first and second reading.
So Renault should read the, uh.
Ordinance.
Yeah.
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, ensuring the rights of residential tenants to engage in collective actions to seek fair
to engage in collective actions to seek fair and dignified housing conditions, protecting tenants from retaliation for organizing other tenants engaging in collective action or exercising other legal rights, providing for definitions and providing for severability in an effective way.
So.
Will be first and second reading motion?
Motion.
Second.
And then, uh, roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Can I have a motion for a second for you?
Motion.
Second.
Vogel? McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Motion exonerate city treasurer for collections of unpaid twenty-twenty-two per capita tax?
Uh, so this action and then the one following it concerning the real estate tax, both actions are just tipable annual actions of council to exonerate treasurer Michelle Sampson from collection of delinquent per capita and real estate taxes. It simply means that the responsibility to collect delinquent taxes passes from her and the city to Sharp Collection Agency and the county treasurer.
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
Uh, sorry, we're not totally related to this, though, kind of. Uh, we use Berkheimer for collection of which?
Berkheimer is the local, you file your local taxes.
Local income taxes. And then Sharp is.
Collection.
Collection for when they're delinquent.
Correct.
I bring that up, I, I think attorney Walker had mentioned once looking at Berkheimer for capita. Maybe it's something to look at just as the. Thinking that we don't have records of everyone who lives in town beyond to where we already are collecting for capita from.
We can ring this a better.
You, you guys are fire fighters.
Does anybody else have any?
Where's your?
Okay. Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
I think it's fired.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Resolution authorized, am I, I'm on the right one, right? No. Uh, motion exonerate city's treasurer for collection of unpaid twenty-twenty-two real estate tax, okay?
Second.
Just discussion, roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Okay, resolution authorized signatures, letter of understanding, city of Meadville, Crawford County, CDVG, competitive project Heidi Cooper Park improvements?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on a letter of understanding for the Crawford County CDVG competitive project Heidi Cooper Park improvements from round three of CDVG-CV twenty-twenty-two between the city of Meadville and Crawford County.
This is a one-point-two-million-dollar grant that the county received on behalf of the city for improvements to Heidi Cooper Park. This will be matched with six-hundred-thousand dollars of city funds in the form of DCNR money as well as just some city, CDVG money. This agreement with the county just outlines who is responsible for what actions as part of that one-point-two-million-dollar grant. And so we're just asking that council, again, bless this, this, this agreement.
So, what's your, can I have a motion?
So, whoa, second.
Discussion?
So the total is one-point-eight plus. It's gonna be a nice investment. And then the, since it's, the CV funds, they need to be extended probably very soon. So it's gonna be like a hard action.
It, it will. So at last, last week's or last council meeting, council approved a contract, an engineering contract with Porter Consulting. That's the first step in getting the design process, the final design process rolling. We hope to have the design out to bid for contractors sometime in March and that it under contract by April, May timeframe. The grant technically must be expended by the end of, of May this year. And we're hoping that HUD allows for an extension of that or at least allows us to be under contract.
HUD's are committed.
Correct, yep.
All right. Anyone else have anything else? Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Public comment on non-agenda items. Wayne, do you still want to speak?
That lady is a man.
Yeah, right on. Thank you, Wayne. Okay, council member statements. Gretchen?
Well, I really don't have anything, it's just been an exhausting week.
We love you, Gretchen. Jim?
Thank you, your honor. A couple of, a couple of items. I'd like to congratulate the recreation authority. They did something that I've been urging us to do and maybe we can follow suit. That is they sold naming rights for their refreshment stand and got a nice chunk of change for it. So as we move toward completing Heidi Cooper Park and other installations throughout city, maybe we can explore that as a way of, of funding ongoing capital improvements. You aren't gonna plug a hole in the budget, but you're gonna have capital for ongoing improvements. And I would, on behalf of the city, I would extend sympathies to Marcia Yowey, our former councilman. Her mother passed away yesterday. That's it, your honor.
Thank you, Jim. Claire?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone for showing up tonight and supportive of the ordinance that we passed. I'm, I'm really happy. You know, for renters, maybe just to give them the peace of mind. And also we'll come, hold, hold everyone accountable that needs to be held on both sides. You know, I think one of the things that we do have to be honest and realistic to it is that, you know, there are bad renters. So we're, you know, this is going to hold both parties accountable. And I'm happy to see it and I just think that we're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, this, I didn't think it would be a big meeting, but now it's like a big meeting. We made big strides. Thank you all for, for coming and thank you for speaking, those of you who did, and that's scary stuff. So I appreciate you taking that step. Really glad that we could take a step for you two towards protecting renters in our city from retaliation, hopefully leveling that, that playing field and ensuring that tenants can, can, can speak out against, you know, unjust experiences with their landlords and can organize together for, for, for better conditions. That's really great. So I'm, I'm hoping that this actually can, can come in time for some people who can really use it. I, we, we, we are moving towards EMS in-house, that's big. And we got one-point-two-million dollars in Heidi Cooper, like, these are all really big things that, that are, that are exciting. We're considering an entirely new zoning ordinance, you know, so thanks to planning commission too. Uh, these are, these are big things, but these are all big things that are, are positive things that I think mean good and meaningful changes for people's lives, every day people in, in Meadville. So it's a big, big, big night, big wins, this is great. Thanks.
Yeah, again, like I say every, every meeting, I want to thank everybody that was here and puts on and all the time. But I also want to thank all the groups that are putting in the time, that are moving us forward and bringing us the information, right? Letting us know who's hurting, letting us know that, that people need us, right? Whether it's, it's the zoning board trying to, to move zoning forward to make it easier, make our town better, whether it's groups in town bringing us that knowledge that, that, you know, we know renters are hurting, but there are renters out there that are hurting and giving us a way to help and protect the people that, that live here, right? Also, I want to thank our, our fire department for all of the work that they are doing and all of the numbers that they got us and helping us understand. And, and I want to thank council for voting in a way that, that is always putting Meadville first, right? It's residents first, it's safety first, and the people who live here first, right? It's just showing how much we're working together, right, to, to move Meadville forward. And I just appreciate you keeping in mind that I also have a family here. My, my, my kids' safety matters and I want them to stay here and right here and, and by here, right? And I, and I want to, you know, be, be in partnership with everybody that lives here. So and the only way we can do that is move Meadville forward, doing the best we can and keeping each other in mind, holding each other at the same level. So I appreciate that. I appreciate everybody in the room. And with that, I'm going to ask for motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, discussion, roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.